At six o'clock, I want to call and order the April eleventh meeting of the Winfield City Council. Would everybody please stand for the invocation and remain standing for the pledge of allegiance? Pastor Kamel Hams here to lead us in our invocation tonight.
Father, we thank you for your many blessings, we thank you for your grace, thank you for your mercy. Thank you for the opportunity we have, oh God, to build this gift called life. We ask you, God, for continued blessing upon the city, on leadership of this city, or mayor, or council. We ask you, God, for spirit of direction tonight, fellowship, community, and cooperation. God, help us to understand that at the end of the day, it's not about running home, it's about giving you glory. Help us to understand, Father, what we're in this life for, to honor and give you glory. Father, this week we're so honored and blessed because you've given so great, the greatest gift, eternal life, from your son, as he rose from the dead on that third day morning. Help us to be mindful of what's been done for us, and what we can do for you in return. We thank you, we pray for you now. In Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Can you show them the pledge of allegiance to the flag of our country?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will there any changes or amendments to the agenda? If not, then we will proceed with the agenda as posted twenty-four hours earlier. The next item on the agenda is the guest and audience participation tonight. I think we have several folks here that want to address the council. Mr. Smith. Hill, I'm sorry. Danny Hill. I'll recognize you first.
Hey, little C. I remember Danny Hill, I worked for State Highway Department. What I want to talk about was, uh, dealing with some of my neighbors that have a problem with another lady that bought a rooster. They just go in the three and three thirty one way, cause they're supposed to be in the morning. And I was going to go, anything we can do about it, take a rooster bag or something. I went and talked to them, tried paying to take it back, but they said, no, we want to keep it. And I said, it's a little leg on the side, eighty something years old, maybe sixty something. I stay in law heights, you used to be, but I'm on the hands. But, uh, you don't want to get rid of the rooster. And every morning, she's a school teacher, she goes away, she goes, I go away, she goes. And they didn't get done with that, start moving. But what I want to know is, anything on the book, uh, can we both put something in the book there? Cause again, we're a noose, it's disturbing the peace. He crows at three in the morning, I don't know.
There's a rooster, maybe his neighbor has a rooster?
Yes.
It says to keep with any animal, bird, or fowl by causing frequent alarm, continue nourishment, or disruption to comfort, or opposed of any person, is hereby declared to be a violation of this order. And fine. It's the same thing as it is on all the other second cities. Yeah, it could be up to five hundred dollars. Well, I mean, the city police department can write a ticket, yeah, they can write a ticket.
The police department, the police department.
Police department can write a ticket, they, they get called, that's just.
And that's the first offense, and then if there's a second offense, it's something else.
They'll say that, it's just a, it's just, it periods, they leave, I mean, it's not legal.
Mr. Hill, uh, had made several complaints about this, or something like that. And I had called myself, the city hall, and spoke with the clerk. And on the same incident, what's going on with the rooster? And she said, animal control, it's what we, uh, gonna look into it, you know, and take care of the situation, or like that.
Okay, but as far as the, uh, way I read.
Does that mean that you spoke, is it, was that you spoke with?
I spoke with Miss, uh, Katrina.
Okay.
And she, uh, saying that, uh, she, she turned over to animal control.
Okay, and, um, the, uh, under animal control, and I think she called, or we called, uh, Camilla Gardner, the animal control officer, and according to, under the animal control ordinance is you can have chickens and city lemons. And so I guess that, that was the question.
This is, this, this was, that we.
It's just, it would be a noise ordinance. It would be a noise ordinance. So, um.
We could only generally vote to pass them by ten minutes, and we moved it.
Yes, uh, she just looked at the wrong ordinance. Yes, you can have chickens, but you can't have one that crows all over the lawn.
Disturbing the peace, and that would come under, like you said, uh, to the police department as far as disturbing the peace.
Just like the loud cars.
So, you know, the police department could go give, give the person maybe a warning, and then if he doesn't remove the, the bird, then, then they would have to write a ticket for him. Disturbing the peace. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm good either.
You too. Okay, uh, next, got the guest and audience participation. Is anyone else?
Yeah, I like.
Mr. Dudley.
I'm scared of the Bible, it's everywhere, twenty-fourth street, Winston, Louisiana. And I've been under seven times, did everybody know about the loud heat? We have never came to a conclusion on this thing yet. I heard the city attorney addressing the loud noise in terms of the rooster. He, he talked as if it's a simple thing, just write a ticket. Well, I believe we talking about since two, twenty twelve, we've been working on that. We had a meeting, three years ago, coming up next month, Ms. Junkin, Ms. Demery, and the city attorney. He's supposed to send it up to the, uh, attorney general. Coming up three years, he hadn't had a response. And you had a response, Ms. Junkin, from, from the city attorney?
We did receive a response.
We did receive a response from the state attorney general.
In terms of, what, we could write a ticket without the meeting? Because that won't you remember? Ms. Junkin, do you remember?
I remember, I remember every bit of that conversation.
Okay, have you had a response in terms of, uh?
I have from the, uh, city attorney, he got one from the attorney general's office. I don't.
Stay in what?
That.
Because the last time I was here, about a year ago, nobody had a, and, uh, Mr., uh, uh, the city attorney said that maybe because of, uh, the change of administration, it was slower by getting back to him.
I remember.
What was it, I don't remember exactly what the administration took, please don't remember that.
I do remember that we had the conversation about that since that meeting a year ago.
Where can we stand?
Um, where do we stand, huh?
I don't remember, uh, I don't.
I remember some.
Well, you know what I think, Mr., uh, Mr. Cassett. Like I told Ms. Junkin at that meeting, Mr. Cassett is not concerned with the disturbance of the people that lie in this, in black neighborhood. He's plainly made that clear, because anytime a city attorney is representing a city, and he refers to the attorney general, and it takes three years to get a response back, and the loud, loud heat, it continues to happen, no tickets being written, nobody's being fined, the people are standing there, disturbed, on a grant of a basis. I call up twenty times a week. I have attorneys with the dispatchers, with patrolmen come out, they act like they don't hear it. This is absolutely ridiculous. This is the worst situation in the black community. And I guarantee you, Mr. Emmer, and Ms. Demery, and Mr., Mr. Ham, they're, I'm saying, this is the biggest problem the black community has. People riding through our neighborhood with the loudest noise you could ever hear. I don't call it music, I just call it rat noise. And people could not live, you cannot live like that. And I just wonder, when is this gonna stop? Because there's no way you can let crime fester without some kind of punishment. Crime will not cease unless you punish people for their crime. And if you don't write a ticket, like he was saying about the rooster, if you don't write a ticket, people are not gonna stop breaking the law. So, y'all as councilmen, the mayor, and the city, this is on y'all. This is on y'all to stop this now. So, I'm wondering now, tonight, do I have to come up here again? Will I ever come up here again about this? Or can't we nip this in the bud tonight? Because all it is, is catching somebody breaking the law, and the media is a red herring. Because the media doesn't save any information, it doesn't print out any information, so when the policeman comes to trial, whips at the offender, the judge has to rely on the, on the police officer's testimony. We talked about that at the, in the meeting. So, we, if the media is a red herring, forget the media, if it's too loud, people need to be punished for it. There's no reason for people, the parking lot at the city center, they'll sit out there on the parking lot. I know we got laws against robbing, they'll sit out there, five, six cars, truck up, hood up, and just blast it. It's ridiculous.
I'm introducing an ordinance tonight about that.
Well, I, all I'm asking, the mayor and the council, that y'all respond to this, and, and let us stop this. Because there's no reason, there's no reason for it. Y'all wouldn't want to live under these conditions.
I, I get it every now and then, I hear it, and it's not, it's not all the time.
I've been on twenty-fourth street back there, I guarantee you, you go up twenty-second street up that hill, after that convenience store, and sit out there in that park, and they come right back through it, and it's just a constant basis, constantly. So, that's, that's really all I want is, but I hope this is the last time I have to come in.
Thank you, Mr. Hill.
Thank y'all.
We have, uh, anyone else on guest and audience participation tonight? Okay, and we'll move on from that. Okay, under old business action items, we have number one, Mr. Hams.
Thank you, Mary. Well, it's the condemnation of Olivia Johnson estate, it's on Martin Luther King, and we had previously gave the, uh, served a notice and gave them three months to do something about it. And I think it's been about a year since then, and still in the same condition, it's not worse. Now, I'm just gonna make a motion if we go ahead and stay on that property.
Is it, I'll have to ask, okay, I think it's already condemned, isn't it?
Well, it's condemned.
I think it was tabled because of, uh, we gave them an opportunity to do something.
Right.
Okay, so.
You carry out to, to bring it down.
Okay, um, all right, so you're making that informal motion?
I'll make that informal motion.
Motion to tear down previously condemned property of Olivia Johnson estate on Martin Luther King. So, I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Junkin? Any discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries, now let's see. Okay, old business non-action, we have none. Uh, under new business action items, first one is to accept the minutes from the February fifteenth, two thousand seventeen, regular meeting. I have a motion to accept the minutes.
So, Mary.
Motion from Miller, I have a second, second from Demery. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Number two is to accept the minutes from the March fourteenth, regular meeting of the Winfield City Council. I have a motion from Demery. Second from Junkin. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Accept the minutes from the March twenty-fourth, two thousand seventeen, special meeting.
So, Mary, hold on, hold on, I got a question before we, before we get to Miller. On, on that, on that particular meeting there, it was some, uh, information on there that said, well, we amended the, the budget. But it was kind of misleading, because it just said sixteen, seventeen budget, but it was particular items in there that was amended. And it wasn't the whole budget, in the way it stipulated, you'd think that it's the entire budget.
I think it's.
It says the proposed amendment one to the general fund of two thousand sixteen, seventeen, which the, the budget at the top that we amended said proposed, amendment one.
Okay, so we left, I like the electric department.
We did amend.
You're right, we did amend it, so it's, we're just to look at it, you wouldn't.
Yeah, it says proposed amendment one to the general fund, yeah, the utility fund, set tax fund, we're not amended.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure it's clear on that.
Okay. Okay. So, we have a motion by Miller, and a second by, second by Edwards. Uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Uh, number four, accept the minutes from the March twenty-ninth, special meeting of the Winfield City Council.
So, Mary.
Motion by Miller.
Second.
Second by Junkin. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Uh, number five is introduction of ordinance, six of two thousand seventeen, to delete section nineteen-nine. Mr. Miller.
An ordinance to repeal section nineteen-nine of code of ordinances of the city of Winfield, Louisiana, to provide for related matters, and to provide an effective date therefore, and consider this introduction.
Okay, thank you. Number six, introduction to more than seven, two thousand seventeen, ending article two, playground and recreation board, section fifteen, sixteen. Mr. Edwards.
An ordinance to amend section fifteen, sixteen of the code, orders of the city of Winfield, Louisiana, to provide for members of the playground, the recreational board, matter of late, thereof, pain, providing effective date. This is, uh, for us to, we have a five-minute board in charge. And if we're gonna do business and that's parish for help, all of us, we have one more member through that committee from the parish. We respect that.
Okay, thank you, sir. Let me, can I, I, I want to make sure we can clarify, we should have an A after that, section fifteen, sixteen, fifteen, sixteen.
It's fifteen, sixteen, I know.
Okay. Okay, number seven is introduction of ordinance eight, two thousand seventeen, the regulation of parking at the civic center. Junkin?
This is an ordinance to amend the code of ordinances of the city of Winfield, Louisiana, to add there to section thirteen dash fifty-three, to regulate parking in the parking spaces provided for the Winfield Civic Center, to provide a penalty for violation thereof, and to provide an effective date therefore.
Thank you.
This is regulation is for the parking, but I guess it's gonna make some of that stuff.
It's gonna be part of the loitering, and it, all that will be written in, from what I understand, from Mr. Cassett, when we get the ordinance written, it'll have, um.
Mr. Dudley.
Mr. Dudley's complaints about the people loitering, and playing loud music out in that parking lot, it's gonna give teeth to the police officers to go out and write tickets for that.
The, the, the.
So, this would not be me.
Just the claim would be, it's gonna start out.
No, they can't be doing that anyway, yeah.
Except during an event, and only by participants of the event, that if somebody can't just come out there and park, and start playing music, that kind of thing.
And even at the event, they can't just come out and hang out in the car, so they have to be getting in the car, leaving, or getting, getting out of their car and going into the building.
May I respond, I mean, may I have a phone, just for George, one second? And, and this is gonna sound crazy, this is gonna sound kinda like it's ugly. But white people have stuff out there all the time, nobody's in the parking lot. All this happens with black folks having these things out there. And I'm just telling the truth, okay, I'm just being honest. We don't have no problem, like, I don't care what white people have out there, there's no problem, no problem in the parking lot. Soon as somebody even have a witness sitting out there, black, they sit out there in the parking lot, they blow their parking lot up. And I'm just being honest.
Okay, uh, thank you.
This is the problem, this, this is the problem.
This is a reaction to something the police chief has asked us to work on also, so.
And I appreciate it.
Just call me, just, it applies to everybody, don't just.
Right, do whatever. I'm not saying it doesn't apply to anybody, I'm just saying what the problem is. I live right in front of a playground, Mr. Cassett, I know what the problem is.
Okay, Mr. Dudley, okay, thank you. All right, number eight is the condemnation of the Anthony Autry property. Okay, we deserve notice on Mr. Autry on March the twenty-seventh, it's a warrant, he's gonna file this with the clerk. Y'all will send a picture, y'all will need with the property, I've got pictures, we're gonna wanna look at, and I file after the clerk also. And have it parked down Maple Street. Number one, I need you to pass a motion, a resolution, I mean, declared as a danger to health and safety.
So, Mary?
Second.
May I have a motion to declare the, uh, Anthony Autry property on Maple Street a danger to safety and health? I'm Miller, I have a second by Junkin. We, is that all a resolution needs to state?
It's all good, it's just gotta be clarified, to do it the way we're doing it, with the twenty-four hour.
Okay, uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, now let's see.
Yeah, as far as the timeframe on this thing, you can, you can, you give twenty-four hours, and you go in and demote him. After, after he gets served with the notice of the judge, which the mayor will sign here just now.
So, you'll let us know when he's.
Yeah, yeah, he'll get served tomorrow, because we can send him to go serve it tomorrow.
So, is this the minimum timeframe, twenty-four hours after he's served?
Yeah, right, because that's, and that's why you have to do for his motion, I mean, you have to have the resolution before you can do this, because that's the only way you can do it with that charter.
I'll make that motion.
May I ask a question? This right here is, uh, this, this is a charge against, the city, who's gonna be, who's gonna be responsible for removing all this debris?
The city will remove it, just like they do the other condemnation, and go against the tax rules whenever the taxes get paid. We just like the one y'all talking about while ago, the, uh, the other thing, I mean, the city is always, initially responsible for the money. You gotta pay somebody to go do it.
So, the mayor will be seeking someone to demote this, and if you're up.
Yes, we've already talked to somebody about it, or Mr. Bass has.
And motion?
The motion's to give twenty-four hours.
So, we need another motion, uh, Mr.?
No, I don't, we, y'all need to, y'all need to approve the condemnation, you know, we did a motion already.
Okay, we need a, okay, so.
The twenty-four hours.
Twenty-four hours to, to do the action for, to cure, actually to cure the, cure the, the danger to health and safety.
All right, so we have a motion to condemn Anthony Autry property from, uh, from Miller. Will I hear a second? Second by Mr. Edwards. All in favor, say aye.
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 Okay.
I'll get you every, give you a judgment, and then we'll see what you say.
Okay, number nine is the authorization for the mayor to execute a contract with Schuler Consulting for ground storage tank replacement. If you look in the packet, there's a, um, a budget, um, ground storage tank replacement budget. We've been talking about this for months, because of the, uh, State Department D H H, uh, pointing us to, our above, our, our above-ground storage tank has been leaking for years, and, uh, they've written in the city up repeatedly about getting that, uh, remedied. And we, at Durmond, and, uh, and Mr. Schuler made a presentation at another council meeting months back, uh, about the ground storage tank replacement. Uh, this, the council voted on a resolution to make the application for funding for it through the clearing water drinking, or the drinking water, uh, law program through the state. And, um, I have not done that yet, I was hesitant on doing that, because I was concerned about, uh, the way to pay for it. But, uh, we have, with the, uh, termination of contract on the, uh, tanks that we had, the, uh, elevated tanks, uh, that will save the city enough, once that's terminated, to make the, uh, monthly note for this, uh, loan. And, uh, so, we're ready to move forward with this project. So, that's, before we do that, we need to, uh, get, uh, an engineering contract in place. And he's already prepared the application for the loan program, and, uh, so.
But we don't have anything in, in ready until how this loan is gonna go.
How the loan is gonna go?
Yeah, you, you saying, go ahead and do a contract. But I don't see where we've already determined how we're gonna pay for this.
We did a, was that in the January meeting? January meeting, we did, uh, we voted and approved the resolution for, uh, to make the application part of it. And Mr. Schuler was here and went through the loan program then, uh, and how it works. It's, uh, it's the best social funding that we can get, because there's a loan forgiveness as part of it. And we already have something in there, and I've got Mr. Schuler here, if you'd like to ask him some questions about that loan, he'll.
Yeah, I got a question for Mr. Schuler. On this, okay, your loan forgiveness was part of the, uh, deal with the state, right?
The drinking water.
Right, and, okay, being that we in non-compliance, we not eligible for that, right?
The way it works is this probably a six-month process. So, let's say in a perfect world, we got all this done, and a week. They wouldn't close the loan when you're out of compliance. But it's likely a six-month process, so I understand what you're saying, they will not close the loan and actually give you the money until you're back in compliance.
Right, so that ought to be the first deal we do anyway, basically.
Okay, so, but we go ahead through the process, and we're working on the process while we're also taking care of our other business. But my question also is, this contract has to be in place, though, before we can even apply for the, I mean, before they'll approve the loan.
Sure, because I'm the one that puts all of it together.
Right, I know, that's what I'm saying, so it's something that's part of the contract.
Mr. Hams, it's, that's for y'all to decide, as far as the company's concerned. The, the timing for me to get all of this done, the attorneys to be there for, going to the bond commission, the whole nine yards, probably a six-month process. So, the idea is, I don't wanna get into the audit situation, I'm, I'm a lawyer, that's dragging up stuff with, with projects with me and everything else. But I do think it would be in the state, because the, the word I'm getting is, is y'all are close, within maybe a month or two. I, I don't have the latest stuff, but.
Hey, look, I don't know where you're getting your words from, you don't mean close.
Okay, but, but I, I have no idea about the audit, fair enough.
That's gonna be the key, though, right?
For them to close the loan for this money, you have to be in compliance.
But we get a loan approval, they'll hold it until we are in compliance, and then close it, right?
Sure, but this is a six-month process.
Is that a requirement, that we be in compliance before you apply for this?
Not applying, that's right, they don't close the loan until you're in compliance. You can apply, there, there are projects that take far longer than six months. Like the Public Service Commission with nonprofit water systems, you gotta get a rate increase, that's true, the project's out for a year. So, I, I understand what y'all are saying, but the truth is, this is a six-month process, no matter what. Just as you were asking about the terms, just to repeat those, uh, it's twenty percent of what you ask for is principal forgiveness, antitrust, all that and a grant. The, the balance, the eighty percent, is twenty years fixed, to two point four five percent. So, those, those are excellent terms, the other issue is, is different.
Okay, so would that increase to seven hundred thousand, I mean, being that, I mean, to say if we, it comes up before we come in compliance, they say, wait, now it's time for y'all to move now, and you're still not in compliance. So, that moves, that moves the money up to the amount of money that has to be paid, because we're not getting the forgiveness part from the state.
The, the forgiveness should be in there, again, I don't expect it right by the timing of the audits, uh, but let's say in six months, that we're. The, the forgiveness should be in there, again, I don't expect it right by the timing of the audits, uh, but let's say in six months, that we're still not there with y'all.
Right.
And we're ready to close, basically, we just sit there and wait. All the paperwork doesn't, it's not like I have to start over, I was giving you the example of the water systems being years with other issues. So, the, the timing with this, the six months, the audit is what it is. But I don't think that, uh, maybe this is another part of your question, let's say that it did drag out for a, a long period of time, and maybe the money changed. That contingency, that twenty-four thousand five hundred in the budget, that's kind of what that's for, is to, there might be some unknowns. Try to move into the budget ahead of time, if you don't use it, you get it back.
I recommend that we move forward on faith that we will be back in compliance, uh, the, before this, uh, six-month window or whatever, but, uh, and rather than wait, because if we wait, you know, we get back in compliance, if it's three months, four months, five months, then that means we'd be another six months out, potentially on getting all this closed and done. If we go ahead and apply now, hopefully it will all come together, uh, at the same time or sooner.
I know what you're saying, Mayor, but I sure as be in compliance before I start moving forward on all this stuff. Because somewhere along the line, it's going back on us. We're not in compliance, we have no idea what our situation is financially, because we have to, I mean, we're three years down the road. From what I understand, the lady told me that we're in deep.
What do we have, uh, as of, at, at the moment, what are we out if we go ahead and authorize this and move forward? Are we out anything, or if, um, if there is a delay? Or are we?
The delay doesn't cost you anything.
Okay.
So by applying for the application, you're going to spend a certain amount of revenue anyway?
It, it depends on the timing, and here's why. Is everybody got this in front of them? You see the part that says system improvement plan, five grand? And you see the part that says business plan support, five grand? That business plan support is, does not go to me, it goes to a financial person that basically puts your books together. That's what banks, drinking water fund calls it, is business plan proof that you can pay back the debt service. No one want to know about that contract, I guess it was last meeting with utility service, I think that's a great idea, that more than paid for this, so that part should be easy. But nonetheless, that would be an expense that you would incur in the application phase. That system improvement plan is there basically as an engineering report. That's what my part would be, to get you to the, to the point where they would consider the loan. So if you're wanting kind of, what am I into it for? Those two for sure would be incurred. Unless it drags out for an extended period of time, I won't treat y'all any different than, than we treat anybody else. We don't bill anything until the loan closes and I get the money to that point that I need, does that make sense? So unless the project completely dies, the city wouldn't be directly out those funds. So I know that's a long answer, but it all depends on where you are in the process.
So the mayor won't get that?
I would say that's fair. If, if you've got six months from now, and the whole project blew up and you decided not to do this, then theoretically, that money would be, be due to five to me and five to, I don't know who y'all are using for accounting work. Does that make sense?
Good. All right, um, any other discussion? If not, then we will call for a vote.
So.
I have a motion by Junkin, second by Miller. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions?
Yeah.
Okay, we have Mr. Hamzah abstains, Mr. Edwards. Did you?
Opposed, no.
Okay, we have three ayes, one no, one abstention. Did you get that for minutes? Okay, the, uh, number ten is Fair Housing Proclamation. It seems like proclamation month, we'll flip over. If I have mine, so I can read it. Okay, thank you. Asking for a resolution from the council, whereas the forty-ninth anniversary of the Fair, National Fair Housing Law Title Eight of the Civil Rights Act of nineteen sixty-eight, during the month of April, is an occasion for all Americans individually and collectively to rededicate themselves a trustful of freedom from housing discrimination wherever it exists. And whereas the law guarantees for each citizen the critical personal element of freely choosing a home, and whereas a fair housing law has been passed by the state of Louisiana, and implementation of the law requires the positive commitment, involvement, and support of each of our citizens. And whereas barriers that diminish the rights and limit the options of any citizen to freely choose a home will ultimately diminish the rights and limit the options of all. Now therefore, the mayor and the city council of the city of Winfield, hereby resolve and proclaim the month of April two thousand seventeen as Fair Housing Month. I need a motion for that, Mr. Attorney? Need a resolution, uh, to declare April as Fair Housing Month. Have a motion by Devery. Second by Junkin, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Next is the National Community Development Week Resolution. Thank you. This, uh, is, uh, we were asked to do this as, uh, by, uh, the L C D B G Block Grant Program. And so this resolution reads, whereas that the week of April the seventeenth through April twenty-second, two thousand seventeen, has been designated as National Community Development Week. The city of Winfield has been a participant in the Community Development Block Grant Program, which funds public infrastructure, economic development, and housing programs in this community. And whereas in this community and communities throughout the nation, thirty-five years of Community Development Block Grant Program funding has developed a strong relationship between this local government and its residents, principally those of low to moderate income. And whereas this community recognizes that the Community Development Block Grant is a partnership of federal, state, and local government, and community and business efforts, and that the services funded by the C D B G program relies heavily on the dedication and goodwill of our combined efforts. Therefore, be it resolved that during the National Community Development Week two thousand seventeen, this community will give special thanks and recognition to all participants whose hard work and devotion to the neighborhoods and their low and moderate residents help ensure the quality and effectiveness of the Community Development Block Grant Program. And be it further resolved that this community, along with the service providers and others whose names are reported at this resolution, hereby petition the U S Congress and administration to recognize the outstanding work being done locally and nationally by the Community Development Block Grant Program and its vital importance to the community and the people who live in its lower-income neighborhoods. And be it further resolved that copies of this resolution be conveyed to the appropriate elected and appointed officials of the federal government, and that this community's name be added to the role of those committed to the preservation and full funding of the Community Development Block Grant Program and maintenance of its essential features over the course of the next session of Congress. The above resolution has been read in full and the vote taken was adopted on the, April, on the eleventh day of April two thousand seventeen. So do I have a motion to adopt this resolution declaring that the week April seventeenth and April twenty, through twenty-second is National Community Development Week in Winfield? Have a motion by Devery? Second. Second by Mr. Edwards. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, one more resolution. The Internet Tax Resolution. This is a resolution urging the United States Congress to enact legislation that will enable local governments to collect revenues already due that are essential to the maintenance and expansion of local government and regional economies, creation of thousands of new jobs, and the enhancement of quality of life and preservation of limited local revenue sources. Whereas many local governments rely on the collection of sales and use taxes to support funding to improve needed infrastructure improvements, strengthen local small businesses, create jobs for their citizens, and fund essential services. Whereas local brick and mortar merchants are important parts of our communities, providing employment to residents, contributing to charities, and keeping communities vibrant. And whereas the Supreme Court has previously ruled that the state and local governments do not have authority to require the collection of sales taxes by retailers that have no physical presence or nexus in the state. And whereas the Supreme Court precedent precedent puts local merchants at an automatic five to ten percent competitive disadvantage by following the law and collecting sales tax at the time of purchase, while remote online retailers are not required to do so. Whereas national studies reveal that the state and local governments lose up to thirty billion each year from uncollected sales taxes from transactions involving remote internet retailers. Whereas the internet, the sales tax revenue could be utilized to better provide basic services, improve infrastructure, and bolster public safety, all without any additional funding from the federal government. Whereas the federal government has been historically reluctant to interfere with the ability of local governments to raise and regulate their own revenues and should not undermine municipal authority with respect to remote sales tax collection. And whereas the technology has evolved to the point that moving the Marketplace Fairness Act and other legislation forward to allow the collection or remittance of destination rate-based tax, sales taxes on internet, internet transactions is not only practical but warranted. Now therefore be it resolved that the city of Winfield commends Congress on recognizing the importance of resolving the issue to put remote retailers and traditional ones on a level playing field. Be it further resolved that the city of Winfield urges Congress to pass destination-based legislation that would give states the option to collect from remote online retailers the same tax that local brick and mortar merchants currently collect. Be it further resolved that copies of this resolution shall be transmitted to the Louisiana congressional delegation, as well as the Honorable Paul Ryan, Speaker of the House, United States Representative, Honorable Bob Goodlap, Chairman of the House Judiciary Committee, and Honorable Mitch McConnell, the state, the Senate Majority Leader. So.
I can answer a question, man. Do we have anywhere collecting this with the Congress, representatives, we have to do? I, I saw something on the news about.
I hope it will be collected just like our current sales tax is collected through the school board.
If I can interject, Amazon actually is now currently collecting local sales tax, and we are benefiting from that. It's being collected by the school board's office as our regular sales tax is, um, and then trans is, uh, some monthly basis, so.
So it has a copy where, how much money coming from them and this?
It's the school board office, that's how much is coming from Amazon, but they, they started collecting that in January. But if you go to Amazon now and try to buy something, you're going to pay ten and a half percent, just like you would if you went to Walmart.
Okay, so do I have a motion on the Internet Sales Tax Resolution? Have a motion by Mr. Edwards?
Second.
Second by Ms. Devery, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, number thirteen, creation of training officer designation for the fire department in civil service, Chief McGovern.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. On behalf of the Winfield Fire Department, I'm here to make a request for the city council, the purpose of the creation of the position of training officer classification in civil service for the purpose of focused demands that have been recently placed upon not only our department, but department statewide. Training officer will be tasked with the responsibilities of all activities that are required to maintain, to maintain and promote an effective training program for the members of Winfield Fire Department. The Office of the State Examiner provides steps to follow to create the new position. Uh, step one is that the governing authority, which is the city council, will first approve the creation of this new position. And then following is an eleven-step process involving the Office of the State Examiner, the Fire Department, and the Winfield Municipal Fire and Civil, Police Civil Service Board. As the fire chief, it's my recommendation and request that the city council create this new position, Fire Department Training Officer. Since new regulations have come, effective January the first of two thousand seventeen, there's been an increase of the demands on training for fire department personnel, and not only the time that we put in, in the training program, but also the record-keeping of it. So that we facilitate in being able to have a designated person to take care of those focused responsibilities. For instance, um, training facilities, which, uh, I might mention here is a good time to mention that, along with conjunction with the Fire District Jury and the help of the police jury, and, uh, are also our district attorney, who's working on the conveyance for the old Chris Oak plant site. That property is going to be donated to the Fire Department District so that we could develop it into a training facility, which actually, uh, uh, adds to thirty-five percent of our training rate. For instance, uh, eighteen hours a year training facility, time has to be put in, sixteen hours a month of company training, multi-company training, independent study, night and day drills, twelve hours a year for officer training, sixty hours a year for new driver operator training, twelve hours a year existing training for driver operator, six hours a year for hazmat, two hundred and forty hours a year for new recruit, and then our forty hours a year of T M S recertification, along with other certifications that are required. All of this benefits the city in respect to the fire rate, which I'll be bringing some of that up in the next session. But, uh, my request to the city is to begin this process, which is, um, no sooner than three months, and may take up to five months, but the process. Because perhaps as the Office of State Examiner, after they have the approval of the city council to create this position, which can be internally, that the questionnaire sent to me, we've got a questionnaire, they create a test in order to, it's a competitive test where they can create a test to give a civil service exam, and then once that exam is passed, then that position can be permanently filled. So that's my request tonight concerning training officer.
Is this going to be a current, um, fireman, I guess, that you have already accepted?
Yes, ma'am.
It would be a new position to hire a new person for?
It, it can work either way. Uh, it can come from internally, because, because training officer is a designated competitive exam, it's, it's not classified as promotional, which promotional means it has to come, has to come within the department. Competitive means it's just like an entry level, others from the outside can also apply. Uh, our, our goal here is not to create a position, uh, so much as it is for, for the benefit of hiring on another person, as much as it is allowing that position to be created to designate someone within our department to take care of those responsibilities. However, it can work either way.
So what you're saying is that you can take someone within the department and train them, and have them, set them up to be trained, then they should come back?
Yes, sir, and we do have those that meet the minimum criteria to be able to apply for this position. And they have to pass a test. Yes, sir, they do. We can make provisional appointments before, before this is completed, so that those assignments can be, uh, assigned to a particular individual to start the process, and then of course whoever that is and others can have to take the test and pass it.
Now we currently, for this type of training, send our, you, you send everyone off somewhere else if they're going to get.
Well, in the past, as far as a new recruit, academies, whenever they're available. Well, in the past, as far as a new recruit, academies, whenever they're available, they're not as available as they used to be anymore, they're rather expensive as well. We do a lot of internal training. KLSU farmer training comes in to our parish twice a month, we utilize their training, as well as joint training with the parish fire department when they're out there as well. So we try to utilize all the resources that are available to us.
That's currently, but this would alleviate some of the necessity of going outside somewhere to get someone else?
Well, as it is right now, under the new regulations, which I'll get into a little bit more here shortly, but there are things that we've been doing in the past as far as training do not even count now under these new schedules. So having a Training Officer will help in two respects. Number one, it will designate someone to take care of these responsibilities. And number two, it will establish with another officer, which is part of the requirements to have officers on each shift.
Okay, any other questions before we ask for the vote? Okay, not, I'll ask for the vote on the creation of Training Officer Designation.
You have a motion, second, right, the motion.
Pardon?
Yeah, a motion, second.
That's right, I have a motion. I'm getting my part ahead of the horse. Okay, I have a motion by Mr. Hams. Second by Ms. Devery. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, don't go anywhere, Chief, you're next. That concludes that section of the agenda. Now we move to New Business Non-Action. And the first thing on here is the Fire Rating Presentation by Chief Montgomery.
Yes, sir, again, I appreciate the Council giving me an opportunity to share some facts with, so that it'll help further your knowledge about the fire rating schedule. And that's the goal here. I've given a couple of leaflets to you, one of them is going to be labeled the Fire Suppression Rating Schedule, and I'm going to try to cram as much information as I can over the next few minutes, so that it'll give all of you hopefully a better understanding of what the demands and the changes are affected January the first of two thousand seventeen. The objective is to share facts of the Fire Suppression Rating Schedule in hopes of increasing the knowledge of and encouraging proactive steps that can be taken in order to help advance and also maintain a current fire rating. As it is right now, the city enjoys a Class Three fire rating, which is an exceptional fire rating for a city of our size. The purpose is, of this schedule is to outline the criteria for evaluating the fire prevention and fire suppression capabilities of individual communities or fire protection areas. The purpose of such an evaluation is to develop a public protection classification for property insurance ratings. What that means is, insurance companies use this schedule to be able to rate their community on the fire protection capabilities, and that determines in a great part of how much they charge homeowners and businesses for their fire protection insurance. The scope of this is the schedule measures the majority elements of the fire protection area's fire prevention and fire suppression systems. The fire suppression component evaluates those systems, address reported structure fires, and it's based on structure fire calls. The schedule gives procedures and formulas for developing the measurements into a public protection classification number on a relative scale from one to ten, ten being the less and minimum recognized protection. So the lower the number of classifications, the better that rating, that the insurance rating is going to affect their insurance rating. Just to give you a few fire department stats on the bottom of that particular sheet, over the past few years, in two thousand thirteen, our call volume was one hundred and ninety-eight calls that we responded to. Two thousand fourteen, increased by almost a hundred calls, two hundred and ninety-two. Two thousand fifteen, it nearly doubled to five hundred and forty, and in two thousand sixteen, we responded to five hundred and sixty-seven calls. And of that, four hundred and thirty-three, which is seventy-seven percent, were heated missed related calls. To date of two thousand seventeen, we have already responded to a hundred and thirty-five calls and projected to close to six hundred calls for this year. The reason I mention those statistics is to bring to our awareness the increased demand of fire department services. Over the past couple of years, the fire department has been responding to EMS calls. Those EMS calls actually have no bearing on our fire rating schedule at all. It doesn't add to or take away whatsoever. It is a service that the city has been providing, or this department's been providing to the city. I've asked Mr. Peters with the advance to share a few comments with you, just to interact about how the fire department has been impacting the quality of our communities.
Thank you, Mayor, and then the City Council. I've been working in EMS for twenty-five years, rural EMS. I've been from one end of the spectrum to the other as far as owners, and I'm now supervisor in Winfield for advance. The Fire Department responding to emergencies here, there's a lot of towns that's not your size, that's bigger than y'all are, that don't even have that luxury. We, and as I said, I'm experiencing rural EMS, most of the time we got two trucks sitting over there and nothing's going on. Sometimes we got a truck in Rustland, we got a truck in Azamnang. The Fire, and that's where the Fire Department comes in. I mean, we've, the chief is, with y'all's blessing, y'all have some trained DMTs here now, your level of care as far as the Fire Department has increased. It is a vital thing for us to have them on hand, because they can already, sometimes they big us your calls, and they already have the protection sets, and we don't have to waste that time, because, I mean, the more time you spend on an emergency call, if it's something serious, the more time you spend on scene, your outcomes are not as good. And as I said, these guys have been trained up. It helps us a lot, because, I mean, you do have medical, medical area, the hospital does, and does in two different directions. Y'all still got your guys on the Fire Department and him and people. Now, we do have a mutual aid agreement, and we have trucks posted if it comes into the area, but those few minutes sometimes can be a life-saving thing. And I think it's tremendous that said, and the City Council and all the people here in Winfield ought to be proud to have that, because like I said a while ago, there are a lot of cities bigger than y'all that don't even have that capability. And it's a good thing to see those guys. I mean, we have troublesome patients sometimes, we have some large patients sometimes. A national statistic, thirty-seven percent of us are overweight, so, I mean, extra help is just, it's just an essential thing that y'all have here. And I think, in my opinion, as I said, I work in seven rural parishes, and I wish I would have had it everywhere else I was. I would have been truly doing it in municipal. And the Fire Chief and those guys that work around there just like, and they feel the same way that I do, we want to do the very best for the citizens in Winfield Parish. And I thank y'all for making that happen.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you. On the second part of that first sheet, you'll see a scale such as it is contained there. What this is, is Fire Service Rating Schedule. The left column is actually what the scale was previous to January the first. The right scale, on the right side of the column, is going to be the new revised schedule. I highlighted a few areas that I want to bring to your attention, because in the three areas, you had, number one is the receiving and handling firearms, it's going to be our communication dispatch area, it's worth ten points. It's on a hundred-point schedule. Ten points of that is handling emergency calls. Fifty percent is, of the hundred percent equation, is the Fire Department. And then the bottom part is the water supply, and that applies for forty percent. There's a few things that's taken change, been changed since July the first that demands our attention. And the reason they demand our attention is, is because if we can be proactive in trying to accommodate for these changes, then not only can we maintain a current rating of three, but we can work to help to improve that rating if all possible. The first one in the telecommunications area of emergency communications on item number four twenty-two, you'll notice that it changed from operators to telecommunications. What that means is, now, it's increased also from a three to a four. What that means is our dispatchers now are going to be required to be certified telecommunications. Not only are they going to be certified telecommunications, but under the Association of Public Safety Commission's officials, there's another second step of certification they'll be required to have. So that's just one part there. If we skip down to the Water Department briefly, you'll see that there's a couple of line items, number six twenty-one, that's gone from a two to a three. This deals with our hydrant sizes and what they're capable of flowing in our water system. And then the biggest change is going to be line item six thirty-one, which has gone from a three to a seven. And what that deals, tells is inspections and fire flows and gauging of the fire hydrant switch. Currently, the Fire Department handles that once a year. Then, of course, the Fire Department columns, that's the middle columns, that's the biggest part of the fire rating, fifty percent. You'll notice that line five thirteen deals with engine companies. It went from a ten to a six. What this means is, this particular category deals with what equipment we have, as far as apparatus, responding units, and then what equipments are on those apparatuses. We're governed by national fire protection agencies on what we're supposed to handle on those pieces of equipment, and you still, these points could pretty much be bought. You just buy the equipment, put it on there. There's been a shift of the burden of these points from that line, if you go down to lines five sixty-one, the old schedule called distribution of companies, the new schedule calls it deployment analysis. You'll notice it went from four to a ten. The burden has been shifted there, and it's not, it's not equipment now so much that they're concerned with. Okay, we know you have your equipment, what we want to know is how you get your equipment to the scene. And this is, this is an area that demands personnel. This is where the, a big shift is. The next line out of, out of five seventy-one is personnel. You'll notice that out of fifty, that is fifteen plus points of the fifty. That deals with the number of people that you have on duty that respond to the calls. And then the next item being five eighty-one is the training, which is, it's a nine. Those three items alone account for thirty-four, which is seventy percent of the total of fifty that the Fire Department generates in this fire rating. All three of those are directly involving personnel, and they completely affect how those scores are generated. Now, the reason that it's important is, and what I'm trying to propose to this council is, is that in order for us to be able to maintain the rating that we have now, which I provided all of you the most recent rating from the Property Insurance Association of Louisiana, this is the actual subclassification details that are sent back to us after rating is done. It was done in two thousand fifteen, our next rating will be in two thousand twenty. Will be graded on years two thousand seventeen, eighteen, and nineteen. This year, next year, and the following year. You'll notice the first page deals with dispatching, receiving, handling calls. Again, number two deals with, that classification's been changed to a four instead of a three. That deals with certifications of our dispatchers. Page number two, the Fire Department. Line number six, there again, credit for distribution. This is the big increase from a four to a ten, which means that all of this is due to item reviews, the percent of the built-up on area, which in adequate with responding first new engine company within a mile and a half. What this is, and there's a book full of stuff you can read if you're interested in it, there's formulas that are figured out, and they regulate us on how much time it takes us to get our first engine to the scene, how much time it takes the second engine to get to the scene, and the aerial apparatus. There's not a piece of equipment down at that Fire Department that we're not required to have. Everything we have, the rating schedule says we've got to have it until we can enjoy the rating that we have. They require that we roll two engines and an aerial apparatus, service aerial apparatus on every structure call. The only way we can get them there is we have to have personnel to it. What hurts us now is, if we've got a shift of one man on duty, he carries the first apparatus out, we've got to wait for responding personnel to come back and get it. Where that hurts us is in the time factor and all that plays into our equation. Item number seven, you'll see it's our biggest efficiency. Credit for company personnel, out of the total of fifteen-plus points, the city obtained one point six eight points. Reason for that is, is just simply that, there are times, we've got four shifts, two of those shifts have one man per shift, the other two have two people per shift. Turning over to the next page, the last, page number three, credit for training. There again, this is another deficiency that we have. Out of nine possible points, we got four point three seven. With the addition of the training facility, which adds thirty-five percent of that part of that rating, it's going to help to increase that. With the addition of Training Officer that fulfills some of our responsibilities of keeping them records, we're hoping to be able to accumulate all nine points there. And then finally down to the water supply, you'll see where there was a change there as well. On the last page, it deals with what our total score was for the city rating, seventy point zero nine percent. We look on the classification mid-page, you'll see seventy point nine percent is exactly one point away from being a class four. That's how close the city is to going to a class four. My proposition to the council is this, is that if we choose that we want to try to enjoy and keep Class Three as a minimum, then, then as Fire Chief, I would request we look at all avenues possible to be able to move toward the additional two personnel that we need the Fire Department to staff, two men per shift. This is going to increase our budget, I know, and I realize that this is a big issue for everybody. But we've worked very hard to try to maintain our budget for the Fire Department, do what we can to cut corners, do whatever we can. But you can see by this rating schedule, and I'll be glad to take any questions that you have, that the three biggest hits involve personnel. The only way that we can make up the difference is to try to add those people to additional people, so that we can maintain that personnel response. I'll be glad to take any questions that you might have.
How many part-time people do equal one?
The change in classification is this, and I'll give you some brief examples. Before January the first, if you were a full-time paid man and you responded to the call, then you got counted as one man. Now it's been changed to on-duty, off-duty. If you're on-duty, you get counted as one person. If you're off-duty, even though you're paid, part-time, or volunteer, the ratio is three. It takes three responding off-duty persons to equal one responding person. So that's the ratio now. And the equation that helps to figure this, the only thing that has, that does not have a deduction in the equation is the on-duty personnel. Everything else has some kind of deduction to it. But when you look at the equation, the algebraic equation that they use to figure this, on-duty personnel is the only thing that counts as a whole by itself.
Is that on-duty, full-time, or on-duty?
On-duty period. Yeah, whether they're full-time or part-time, it matters not whether they're full-time or part-time, it just matters that they're on-duty.
This rating schedule is, it's graded over a three-year period, is that correct?
This council is grading every five years. They're graded on the three previous years prior to the grading year, which are our grading year. They'll send us a packet in late two thousand and nineteen, which we'll start filling out. It'll end December thirty-first, two thousand nineteen, and then somewhere around March or April, they'll come in and do a grading in two thousand twenty. And it'll be on two thousand seventeen, which we're in right now, eighteen, nineteen. That's where we're at.
So what you're saying, we have all the equipment we need, we just don't have a man box?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, we have everything that we could purchase equipment-wise to help satisfy the rating demands. And then therefore they adjusted the burden from, okay, no longer can you buy the points. We're going to give you credit for it, but now we want to see how you're getting that equipment there. And it all factors into the response times and so forth. I'll be glad, the office is open, you know, during the week, if you want to come down and sit down and talk, if you have any other questions about it, I appreciate it, if you're interested. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you. New Business Non-Action number two, Mr. Hams. Okay, uh, new business line action number two, Mr. Hammonds.
Okay, well, everybody up here is a public servant, that's why I started like that. And sometimes you'll get criticized, you're going to get, uh, tough, tough topics, you're going to, so we got to be able to, uh, answer the issues when they come up, I mean, as a group, you know, and if we can't do that, I guess we in the wrong business. That's why I look at. Okay, the reason I put the, uh, pay raises on, on the agenda is because the full council is something that we need to discuss, because there's been some, uh, raises given and there's been questions about it, and I think it's time for the public to receive answer about it, okay? Uh, one of our primary duties as the council is to make sure we utilize taxpayer's money as, as wise and efficient as possible, you know, and sometime it happens, sometime it don't happen, but that's our, one of our primary duties, okay? During, uh, our fiscal years when we pass budget, that's what we utilize during the city for the year, okay? During the, prior to this budget being passed, it was stated by our mayor that we didn't have any money for raises. So that's what we told our employer, that you won't get a raise this year because, you know, we don't have any funding for it. But during the process, we find out through public record that some employers received raises, you know, and so therefore I say, well, it's, it's a question that the entire council needs answered, you know, not just, well, I done received a lot of questions about it, you know, I don't have all the answers. So I say, if we get up here as a group, maybe we can answer some of the questions, you know, so during our, uh, budget time, we have to make sure that we pass it to make sure that's what governs the mayor's day-to-day operation. Once we pass the budget, it's on the mayor to govern that day-to-day operation for the entire year. So that's what we expect them to do, that's what the citizens expect them to do, you know, so when I was asked of why did some people get raises, I told them, well, wait, come to the council meeting, or we, I asked the question myself, you know, I don't know, I don't have all the answers. But I do expect the council as a group, as well as the mayor, to answer some of these questions so we can move forward, you know? So some of the raises was given on ten, in ten sixteen, three individuals, dollar pays. I had no knowledge of it. We discussed it briefly and come, and it was, well, we didn't want to discuss it, was some of the answers I got. Come one seventeen, January, three more individuals getting a raise, ranging from a dollar to three dollars. So I'm like, well, this got to be discussed, you know? So my question is to the council as a group, you know, like, we need to answer some questions. If you have a question for me, I'll answer, but myself, I'm going to ask some questions first. Like I say, and I'm asking, I guess I stole Council Lady Junk, I mean, Demmer, do you think it was fair for these individuals to get raises and not everybody?
No, I, I think if, um, not just individuals, we need to look at it, we need to look at it as a whole, and I'm not saying that to give everybody a dollar raise, but I do think the city employees should get a raise.
Okay, thank you. So I ask, I guess, uh, Ms. Junkin, were you aware that any of these employees received a, a raise prior to them getting it? They was going to get one?
That I heard exactly what Ms. Demmer said.
Okay, I'll take that. Uh, Mr. Miller, do you approve the way these raises was given, I mean, as far as?
I would need to know more about the particular circumstances of each individual, but, you know, I want all the employees to have raises, of course.
And I, and I agree with that, see, and that's our job as a council to make sure we know, and, and right now, when they're not knowing, the raises are being given, then we find out after the fact. And that's the problem, and that's the part I have a problem with. Mr. Elwood, did you, what, did you observe any of the morale of the, the workers that, that you visited with?
It's probably a little point, and the reason for that is probably because of the information we got from the mayor, is that we didn't have any money to give these raises. And we made it during Christmas time, during the time that, you know, we give out these twenty-five cent raises or whatever it might be. So we went on with the program with that. The next thing I know that, that wasn't, that wasn't true, that was not factured, it was that somebody was going down with certain employees. And then I looked at some employees that we gave raises to, I have no problem with that, but I looked at some of them that wasn't giving raises, that's doing two or three jobs. So that really, you know, you create morale problem, that just pretty much killed it right there. Right now, morale problem in our city, yeah, without employees is just probably zero. They don't have any faith, they don't have any trust, and what comes out is the next thing you know.
Well, what I do now, I get a mayor opportunity to explain his reasoning behind the raises because that's, he was the one that gave a raise. So I, I mean, I had to turn it over to the mayor before he could explain this to us and everybody else, and then everybody be on the same page.
Um, I gave these raises because, um, I felt like, uh, it's, it's my job as mayor to make sure we have, um, keep the lights, water, sewer, and those type things on, and that we have qualified people in the necessary positions to do that and to maintain that. And, uh, I gave those raises based, uh, on that, uh, within the, uh, my authority as a mayor, and, uh, that's my answer. Anytime you do something like that, um, and everybody doesn't get something, sure, all of some, everybody thinks, uh, maybe they've been treated unfairly, but, uh, based on my decision, that's my answer.
But the only thing I say, we didn't put any money in the budget for raises. The budget was passed and approved without raises, and then for, that mean money had to be moved from one spot to the other, other line items, because it wasn't there. And that's the, that's the part that concerns me, that if it wasn't there for that, it should have been a, a, a group effort, not just because that's what you felt, it should have been the entire council. So we can decide, well, we could have moved some of this money as a group, because we the one, then you come back and want the budget amended, and, 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 and you want to move the budget amended because it's been some wasteful or overspending somewhere. So if we did that initially, maybe we wouldn't have had to amend the budget.
Well, I've given my answer.
Okay, well, that's all we had, so, I mean, I take that, and, and so, and everybody here know what it is, and that's why we all on the same page, that's what I'm saying.
My other question to the mayor is, so, you tell us as a council that you can't give these raises, you can't do this. We go out and tell the same match to our people out here, so, I mean, wait, 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 you throw us under the bus here, and then all of a sudden these employees come to us and tell us, he could get one, probably get one. But you the one that told us, and we followed your lead on this, and now all you can tell us is what I decided to do. I think that was a really bad decision on your part, and if I had my way, if I hurt these employees, I'd resent those raises. And give them, go back to the table and try and give everybody a raise, okay, I'll just hold off until we do the next budget. I think that's the fair way to do it, instead of putting us out there like that, because all we did was talking in one big fat line.
Okay, and I think that, in, in, in conclusion of this here, I think, I think what we need to do as a council, and I owe myself as responsible as the next man, uh, lady, you know, I think, uh, we go have to go in and, and, and look at our policy, I think then, Ms. Junkin, we are on that board, we have to go and look at this policy and see how we can make sure that from this point forward, all employees are treated fairly, you know, so we, we have to implement whatever we need to implement, I think that's what we need to do, because yes, we do allow you to, uh, uh, go carry our day-to-day operation, but it's still a guideline. When the passing of the budget guides you to what you're supposed to not do, so that's, and we, and that's not just fair to the citizens and the employees, it's not fair to the council. For us to have to get these questions because it's going behind our back as well, so we need to do this upfront. If you got something, think you need to do, let everybody be involved, and then say, yeah, that's the best idea, and everybody know. So I'm finished with what I have to say.
Number three then, electric bonds, that's Mr. Hammonds.
Well, the only thing I got on that is that, to make sure, Susan, did we pay that money that we supposed to pay, uh, we owe somebody fourteen thousand dollars? The ECO?
Oh, the substantial completion, we had to file a substantial completion, it'll be paid this week at the, at the operations and.
Okay, then we'll be finished with?
Will be finished, yes. The bond will be finished.
So we'll have a copy of that check and receipt from that.
Okay, number four, audit update.
I, I received, I went to see John Johnson Cunningham, and I got a, this little form of the lady, and her exact words to me was, she would try and get the reading of her, whatever she was writing of it, and maybe be here by the end of this week. That was fourteen and fifteen. And I asked her about fifteen and sixteen, she told me that we have not even received, we don't have fifteen and sixteen. Fifteen and sixteen, we're going through the same process as fourteen and fifteen, so we know how long that took. So fifteen and sixteen, that's what I, that's what I was talking to her, I said, what situation? The tank, we don't know where we are financially, we don't know what we are, we jumping out here on this boat that's got a big old hole in it, we don't know what we're doing. We need, with three years of this, it's too much for us to keep on trying to move forward financially without knowing where we are.
Let, let me clarify something.
Let it finish, okay? Now, I talked to her, I said, what about sixteen and seventeen, if you're different, that's going to be a problem for you too. I'm looking at the end of the year, maybe, we'll be in compliance. And that's why I was concerned about, we're going to jump over the boat, fight this tank, do we really have the funds, are we going to be, you know, in compliance to do anything? We don't know that, we don't have a clue. Huh?
We have, we, we are, um, approaching a year and a half late on the fourteen, fifteen, and that's, should be written up, it's completed other than being written up and reviewed, and then we will have that one. Now, we, the other one was due December thirty-first, so we're less than six months late on that one. Uh, and they, Sheffield and Sheffield, the accounting firm that, uh, helped pull all the numbers together for the one that's being written up now, has been working on fifteen, sixteen, and they do require some more, um, information from us that Susan gathers and supplies to them. And then they, when they get their audit adjustment figures and everything together, they give that to Johnson Thomas Cunningham, and they will start on the fifteen and sixteen. And then the one, we haven't even finished this year yet, and the purpose of contracting the, this work with Sheffield and Sheffield that we did several months ago was so that when we end this year on Ju- June the thirtieth, that, uh, it won't take but a little, some adjustments in, um, in, uh, July and August, and then they can hand them the stuff and they can work on, uh, the year that we will have just completed sixteen and seventeen on a timely basis.
Only question I have, do, do we know what it is? I mean, is, is it minutes, invoices, or, or receipts, or?
Ms. Kelly will have to answer that.
I mean, what are they looking for now? Are they looking for minutes, invoices, receipts?
Uh, they, they're looking for outstanding receivables, and I compiled a spreadsheet for that for, um, for Sheffield, and they've been in tax season, so they've been kind of thinking of coal as well, um, and then an outstanding checklist as of June thirtieth of two thousand sixteen, so.
So we pretty much know what they are looking for?
Right, and I think, I think this fifteen, sixteen has gone much easier because they didn't have to, what do you want to say, recreate the wheel where fourteen, fifteen, they were trying to figure out the accruals at Lawrence and Hill, and they go back in and, and just figure out, you know, how the city worked and, and where everything went to, you know, um, so I think fifteen, sixteen has gone much easier for them because they had experience.
So that's, that's the audit update, in that we should have the fourteen, fifteen in the next, uh, I don't know, uh.
Is that going to be completed, does TC register?
Yeah, I, I have included an email she sent on Monday in your packet, that just said she was about seventy-five percent complete rating, it should be done this week.
The writing, there's a difference.
The writing is the book.
The report, the report that goes.
You know, it's got a lot of report, reporting in that book.
And then she's got, it's got to go through two peer reviews, which, um, so she said she'd give us an update by the end of this week. But I, I expect we probably have an update by Thursday. Would you let us?
Yeah, we're, we, we intend, as soon as we get her, she says she's got it written up, we're going to call a meeting and let her bring it and present it and, uh, to the council. And then hopefully we'll be doing the same thing within a few months after that for, uh, fifteen, sixteen. So when you give it to them a month, would you think? I've been, I've been wrong on my vote for agnostication so many times, I hate to make another one, but, uh, the, uh, on fourteen, fifteen, she's very, very close, um, and then, uh, just, it's completed other than the writing of the reports. And then fifteen, sixteen, she can't start on until Sheffield gives her the information to start, but Sheffield is still putting everything together to give them, which hopefully that will happen, uh, within a few weeks. And then they'll start on that. Okay, um, that being said, then, uh, do I have, there's nothing else on our agenda, so do I have a motion to adjourn?
So what?
Motion by Demmering?
Second.
Second by Junkin, all in favor, say aye.